Let me tell you, oh my friends, about this joy I'm living in. Let me take the mic, go on and testify. I was dead and then I came to life. No more living in the dark of night. Now everything's alright. I've been changed, I've been saved. A new day. I've been changed, I've been changed. Tell me why would I turn back now? There's no end to the love I've found. Future's bright and there ain't no doubt. I've been changed, I've been changed. Oh my heartbreak fades away like a book when you turn the page. Let me take the mic, go on and testify. I was dead and then I came to life. No more living in the dark of night. Now everything's alright. I've been changed, I've been saved. A new day. I've been changed, I've been changed. Tell me why would I turn back now? There's no end to the love I've found. Future's bright and there ain't no doubt. I've been changed, I've been changed. I've been changed. I put my hand in the air 'cause I know you're there.
Your love did something magical.
I put my hand in the air 'cause you heard my prayer.
A transformation radical.
I put my hand in the air 'cause I know you're there.
I know it's supernatural.
I put my hand in the air 'cause you heard my prayer. I've been changed, I've been saved. I can feel it now. I believe it. I've been changed, you know I believe it. Tell me why would I turn back now? There's no end to the love I've found. Future's bright and there ain't no doubt. I've been changed, I've been changed. Let me tell you now.
Amen. Good morning, y'all. It is 6:30. We're gonna honor everybody's time and go ahead and get started. I just need somebody to confirm you can hear me 'cause I'm using a new mic.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, good morning, good morning. Oh man, this is such a... It's gonna be a good time today. It's gonna be a good time for the next couple of days 'cause we're gonna be praying through breaking. We're gonna break some things off and then we're gonna build some things back up. We're gonna build up. So Lord, we just thank you, Lord. We just thank you for giving us another opportunity just to come before you and giving us breath. And thank you for your mercies. You know, you didn't have to, but you did. And so we just thank you for this day because we know, again, Lord, that this is the day that you made and we will rejoice. And we choose to be glad in it and we honor you. And now as I hand over this worship to you, Holy Spirit, I'm just here to watch you lead. I'm just here to watch you demonstrate your power, Lord God, through me. I'm just here to watch your glory fall on us. I'm here to see your scriptures and your word come to life for us and the promises that you've made for us to have them become fulfilled in our lives. And I'm just here to watch you, Lord, prepare us for another day, another week ahead, Lord God. And Lord, I'm just here to get ready for the testimonies that are gonna come of breakthroughs. And Lord, all of the blessings and all the things that you have already done for us. So I thank you, Lord. I thank you, Lord, for the folks who are here. I thank you for the folks who are gonna listen later. Lord, I thank you for those who tried to make it but couldn't, Lord God, and those even in their hearts, they're wrestling whether they should or shouldn't. I thank you for everyone under the sound of my voice, Lord God, and I pray that today there'll be a shift and a change. Amen. Y'all, I was thinking about this before we get started. And I'm gonna share my screen. I'll share this with you while I'm sharing my screen about God's mercy and His judgment. My daughter Isabella, for those who don't know, she was at an event. She's been in New York City since last Thursday with her school. And they were participating. They went together as a school, the band and the color guard. They went together so that they could participate in the St. Patty's Day parade. The parade was Saturday. They got there on Thursday. And the kids, their agendas, their itineraries were so locked tight. They had an event or something they had to do. Every moment was accounted for. And so, of course, the kids were exhausted 'cause they were walking the city. They went to shows and, you know, fancy dinners and all kinds of things, right? Dinner cruise, all those things, all those amazing blessings that these kids got to experience together along with their teachers and their chaperones. And they came back last night on a delayed flight, exhausted, exhausted, exhausted. So as we went to pick up my daughter, I was thinking about, you know, how these kids are gonna make it through the next day and how exhausting and how exhausted 'cause they have a long day on Mondays. Mondays, they go to school, they come home, they do homework, and they then go back to practice from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So it's a really long day for her on Mondays. And so I told her, you know, hey, you know, I'm thinking about you staying home. By the way, a lot of kids are staying home today. And then, and I was thinking about this morning about just how sometimes as parents we have to show mercy to our kids. I'm usually the one who shows judgment. And my husband shows mercy on judgment. And the roles shifted last night when my husband said, "No, no, no, she needs to go to school." And this morning, it was so pressed on my heart to just show mercy. And that just reminds me of how God is with us. There are some times when He shows us mercy and sometimes when He shows us judgment. You know, we go through life, we do the things, you know. We get caught up, we're very, very busy. You know, we're checking all the boxes, you know, work, school, life, health, self-care, everything, right? We're just going on our own agendas and our itineraries and our calendars are so packed. And there's a moment that you come to where you need to just take a pause and you're so exhausted, you can't go the next step. And the Lord says, "I'm gonna show you mercy, mercy, mercy." And sometimes those mercy looks like favor. And sometimes those mercies just pulling you back into Him so that Jesus can just show you His love. And I hope that is for somebody today who needs to hear that, yes, He is showing judgment, but He is such a merciful God, right? He's such a merciful God. So in that vein, we're just gonna take a couple of minutes to just adore Jesus and just, we're just gonna adore Him just for who He is. And Lord God, for just being such a merciful, a merciful, merciful God. Thank you, Lord. We're just gonna give Him a couple of minutes of just adoration. So Father, for being such a merciful, merciful Father. I thank you, Lord. I know that there are times when there is judgment. There's real judgment that has to happen because of our own actions. But I thank you, God, that you are merciful. So I adore you, Lord. I just thank you, Lord, for just being who you are already, our Savior, our Lord, and just being so merciful to us. You've allowed us to see another day, Lord. You let us wake up this morning and you didn't have to. You put breath in our lungs and you didn't have to. And yet you've chosen us, oh Lord, disobedient children. Oh, thank you. Thank you for your mercy. You are amazing. Amen.
Amen.
So now we're gonna just spend a couple of minutes and just give thanks. Again, the word says, "Give thanks to the Lord." It tells you why, because He's good. Ever and I thank you, Lord, that your love isn't like our love where it kind of falls off and we don't feel like it or, you know, it's kind of a love where, you know, as soon as you get irritated, we get mad and we don't love. We fall out of love so easily. So I just thank you for your love, Lord God. I thank you because it is your love that brings us here. It's your love that speaks to us through scriptures. Your love that shows up in the Word as flesh. It's your love that comes to us through the power of the Holy Spirit. It is your love. So we just thank you, Lord, for bringing us here to another Monday. Thank you for sparing our lives. We thank you for answering prayers. We thank you, Lord God, for everyone who's under the sound of my voice, who is standing in need of something. We just go ahead and thank you, Lord, because you have already answered. We thank you for opening our eyes so that we can see the plans that you have for us, not just dream about it, but they actually come to life. We thank you for the favor on our jobs. We thank you for the favor with men. We thank you, Lord God, for the favor with heaven. We just give you thanks, our God, because you are truly a wonderful Father. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy and your goodness and your kindness towards your children. We thank you, Lord God, that we, again, here we are, another Monday, and we are so grateful, Lord God, for everything that you have already done and the things that you're gonna do today, Lord God. I thank you that you have already sent your angels ahead of us today, Lord God. And so there's victory at the end of tonight, that this is a day of testimonies and breakthroughs, Lord God. Every day we are renewing our minds. We have to renew our minds. And so we thank you, Lord God, that you're giving us the strength to renew our minds. And when those thoughts come up against us, when there's those attacks come up against us, we thank you that you're giving us the strength, Lord God, to know when it is your voice and when is the voice of the enemy so that we don't fall short, Lord God, or we don't fall into the traps. Oh God, we thank you that every trap that the enemy has set has already been dismantled. We thank you, Lord God, for fighting for us when we can't, Lord God. Warfares and battles, we thank you that you have already fought us. We thank you for the safe return, Lord God, of these children back from New York City. We thank you for all of the families who got home safe last night, Lord God. We thank you, Lord God, that there was no untimely death in our families, Lord God. We thank you for healing, healing, Lord God. We thank you for your healing power. And we thank you, Holy Spirit, for your presence. Amen. 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 Let's go into confession, y'all. Let's keep it rolling. Almighty God, we acknowledge and confess that we have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We have not loved you with all our heart, mind, and strength. We have not loved our neighbor as ourselves. Keeping within us our sorrow, Lord God, and the good we have left behind. For you are full of compassion and gracious. Slow to anger and plenty us in mercy. There's always forgiveness with you. Restore to us the joy.
Restful of your salvation. Find out that which is broken can be lighted. So rest to our souls. Speak to each of us and let your word abide with us.
Father, we thank you. Thank you for hearing our confessions. Lord, it's coming from our hearts. So Lord, we thank you for hearing, leaving our confession to you. Amen. So today we are in, we're gonna come out of Ezekiel 37, 1 through 10. This is the passage that talks about the valley of dry bones. It is gonna be a little heavy this morning, but I'm not gonna apologize for that. I'm gonna be obedient, okay? And I wanna read through some of this and then I wanna touch on the prayer points that we're gonna pull. Again, Monday, we're talking about breaking chains. And I don't know, maybe for you, you don't have anything that needs to be broken. I constantly have something that needs to be broken off. And so in verse, in chapter Ezekiel 37, 1 through 10, "The hand of the Lord was upon me, and He brought me out in the spirit of the Lord and set me down in the middle of the valley." Amen. Well, first of all, Lord, I thank you for the wisdom and the revelation that's gonna come out of this word, that someone's gonna hear it a little bit different than they heard it before. Thank you, Lord God. Holy Spirit, just guide our ears so that we're hearing you and no other spirit, Lord God, so there is no chaos or confusion, Lord God. So I bind every spirit that seeks to create chaos and confusion. Amen. Amen. In the name of Jesus. I'm gonna come back to that. I saw you coming. Nope, not today. "The hand of the Lord was upon me, and He brought me out in the spirit of the Lord." So you gotta travel with the Holy Spirit. "And He sat even in your visions, and He set me down in the middle of the valley. It was full of bones. And He led me around them, and behold, there were very many on the surface of the valley. And behold, they were very dry. And He said to me, 'Son of man, can these bones live?' And I answered, 'Oh, Lord God, you know.' And then He said to me, 'Prophecy over these bones and say to them, 'O dry bones, hear the word of the Lord.' Thus says the Lord God to these bones, 'Behold, I will cause breath to enter you, and you shall live;' and I will lay sinews upon you,'" that's like ligaments. "'And I will cause flesh to come upon you and cover you with skin and put breath in you, and you shall live, and you shall know that I am the Lord.'" Oh Lord, I pray for the dry bones under the sound of my voice, Lord God, that we will become anew, that we'll have flesh, Lord God, to come upon us and cover us with your skin. Put your breath in us so that we shall live and we shall know that you are the Lord. Amen. Verse seven says, "So I prophesied as I was commanded." You see, you can't just say any old thing. You gotta be under the instructions of what God says about you. That's why you gotta be in your word. And as I prophesied, there was a sound and behold, a rattling, and the bones came together, bone to its bone. And I looked, and behold, there was sinews on them, and flesh had come upon them, and skin had covered them, but there was no breath in them. Then He said to me, 'Prophecy to the breath. Prophecy, son of man, and say to the breath, 'Thus says the Lord God, come from the four winds, O breath, and breathe on these slain, that they may live.'" So I prophesied as He commanded me, and the breath came into them, and they lived and stood on their feet, an exceedingly great army. And I thank you, Lord, as you're standing up this exceedingly great army in your presence now, Lord God, that you are releasing your breath, Lord God, that you are, as your word said, your word says, that the four winds are coming upon us. Amen. That we might live. Amen. 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 So we're praying, we're praying over breaking chains today. Again, we just, we have to, we have to. Father, I thank you for the four winds that are coming in right now. I thank you, Lord. I see it. I thank you, Lord God, that you have already activated the dry bones, Lord God. All of us standing in need of just a renewal, even fresh oil on our heads, Lord God. I thank you that as you are renewing these dry bones, these bones that have been so tired and exhausted, Lord God, even exhausted by doing good, those of us that need a renewal, Lord God, these dry bones and dreams and hopes and desires, these dry bones, the dreams that we had for our families and the things that have fallen short, Lord God, that you're renewing them now, Lord God. I speak, Lord God, as only you tell me to, Lord God, that the breath enters back into us. And I pray, Lord God, that the Holy Spirit will fill their hearts, Lord God, and minds so they will know when it is you. I thank you, Lord, that these dry bones are being raised up, Lord God. And I thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus, for that. Thank you, Lord. So in Acts 16:26, it says, "And suddenly there was a great earthquake, so that the foundations of the prison were shaken, and immediately all the doors were opened, and everyone's bonds were unfastened." So we're praying this prayer right now so that we can come out of the prison. And the prison for us is the mental one. It's the one, it's our mindset, is being behind bars, y'all. Still, you know, caught up, still trapped by the way that we think, the old ways of thinking, thinking that we can't trust God or thinking that we gotta doubt Him because we don't see things playing out the way they should. Or, you know, as soon as there's an earthquake, as soon as something rattles our cage, we run back to the world. Amen. And so this morning, we're asking for that earthquake that's gonna shake the prisons of our minds and open every single door, okay? And break every single bond. It says, "Everyone's bonds were unfastened." In order for this to happen, you've gotta believe, God. You can't just say these things. You can't just say these words. You gotta understand the power of prayer. You release, you're releasing these back to heaven so that things can be activated in your life. It's not just saying a word. So I'm gonna, we're gonna pray right now that there's an earthquake that shakes the very foundations of any prison that you're in and call out what that prison, if it's debt, D-E-B-T, if it's death, if it's health, whatever it is, if it's fear, whatever that prison is, call that thing out and ask God to immediately open the doors. We're asking for it suddenly and immediately in the name of Jesus. Y'all, go ahead and pray. Father, I come before you with your children, Lord God. This morning, as we are looking for suddenlys and immediatelys, right? Immediately, Lord God. Father, as you have commanded, Lord God, in your words, the same way you commanded the dry bones back to life. Lord God, I'm praying for that right now. And immediately release these women, Lord God, from every single bond.
The opportunity we support to be renewed.
Every prison that they've placed themselves in. Every prison that someone else has placed them in. Old ways of thinking, Lord God. Every prison that they've been locked up. Okay, every behavior, every thought that became a prison, Lord God. Anything that they have done that's created a prison, even the altar. Sometimes the altars are our families. Sometimes the altars are our jobs. Any altar that has put itself above Him, above you, Lord God. I pray that that altar is broken down, Lord God, right now so that you. Anything that has bound them up, unfasten these chains for them right now, Lord God. Let it work in their hearts and in their minds, Lord God. Father, intercede in their thoughts, Lord God. Interrupt their thoughts, Holy Spirit. Do as only you can interrupt their thoughts. And every single, every single thing that bind up their thoughts, every dream, every nightmare, everything that's been attacking them at night, Lord God. Lord God, I go in that. Unfasten that. You give them the keys, Lord God. Let there be a great earthquake in their life. Let it shake some things up in them, Lord God. Let them see the foundations are, yeah, it will be shaken. Every foundation of prison, anything that had them locked up, Lord God. Anything that had them locked up and kept them away from you, Lord God. You're gonna let them be released right now, immediately, Lord God. Immediately and suddenly, Lord God. I pray, Lord God, that every single door is open for them right now. Every single door is open for them right now, immediately. Everything they stand in need of, Lord God. Financially, Lord God. Oh God, for peace, Lord God, for just guidance and direction. Some of them need favor with their jobs. Some of them need favor with their spouses. Some of them need favor for their children. Father God, I ask, Lord God, that every single door now becomes open that you will clear their minds so that they want to hear you, Lord God. And so, Father God, I pray that those bonds that they were locking up is now broken off and they are released, Lord God. Thank you, Lord God. Thank you, Lord God, for renewing these dry bones. Lord God, thank you for renewing these dry bones, Lord God. Break them out of the prisons that they're in in their minds, Lord God, and in their hearts. The prison of unforgiveness, oh God. Father God, I pray over that, that immediately and suddenly, that prison of unforgiveness, those chains are broken right now. Let go of what someone might have done or what someone might have said that they will release. You'll eat your own favor if you keep being. Oh my God, you will eat your own favor if you don't forgive. Amen. You will eat your own favor if you don't forgive. You gotta let that thing go. Father God, I pray, Lord God. For disappointments that have become their own. They've been stacking one on top of the other, and somebody's been counting their disappointments. Someone's been counting their losses. Lord God, he says, no more, daughter. Amen. He says, "I've called you out. You are no longer a dry bone." Amen. He said, "Or call out of this prison." You gotta let these things go. Don't stack your disappointments. Start stacking them blessings, amen. The Father, pour out your blessings on your daughters so much that they can't even count, Lord God. In your name, Lord God. In your name we ask. Let there be a suddenly and immediately, let there be a shakeup, let there be an earthquake in our thoughts, Lord God. Interrupt the thoughts, Lord God. Amen. I thank you, Lord. I thank you, Lord God. Amen. Amen. The next verse talks about coming out. John 11:43-44, it says, "When he had said these things, he cried out with a loud, loud voice." This is Jesus. Lazarus, come out. This morning, He's calling you by your name. Amen. And when you read this scripture, say it out loud and use your name and call your name. Amen. The man who had died came out. He's died to sin, y'all, in your cases. His hands have been bound with linen strips. See that binding again. And his face, thank you, Holy Spirit, for showing me. With a cloth, some of your face was gagged up with a cloth. You can't even speak right. Jesus said to them, "Unbind him and let him go." So as the Lord has commanded now, as you have commanded your angels now, as you release the ministry of angels now, to tell them to unbind, unbind your daughters and let them go. Saying, "Come out." So pray this over yourself, Lord God. As your word says, the same way you cried out to Lazarus, the same way you commanded him to come out, it's the same way that you're commanding your daughters, Lord, to come out. For God, for every single woman under the sound of my voice, that they will come out and they are unfound and let them go. There is freedom in Jesus. So Father, I ask, Lord God, for every single one of us here who have died to our condition, who've died to our behavior, who've died to unforgiveness, who've died to lies, who've died to threats, who've died to all of these things. We have died to the world. We have allowed ourselves to die to the world. We've even died, our values have died. We have given ourselves away to the world. We have given ourselves away to our children. We've given ourselves away to our jobs. We have died for the wrong things. We have died for favor in the eyes of man. We have died for money. What can I say? Lord God, all of us have done this, Lord God. Our hands and feet were bound, Lord God, so that we couldn't produce, Lord God. Every one of us, Lord God, have gone through this. And now, Lord God, the same way you call out Lazarus, I pray that you release now, God, that you will call out your daughters' name by name. Punishment, Holy Spirit, in their hearts, so they will hear your voice. Amen. So God, release their hands so that they can be productive, Lord God. Release their feet so they can walk the path of victory, Lord God. Your killer said, their face being wrapped with a cloth. Lord God, I pray that you remove that now. Remove that linen cloth from their face so they can see you as you see them. Remove that cloth from their eyes, Lord God, so they can see your glory. Remove that cloth from their ears so they can hear you. Their mouths so they can speak what you say about them, Almighty God. What you say, not what the world says, Lord God. You say to us, as you said to Lazarus, you said, "Unbind him and let him go." So Lord God, I ask, in the name of Jesus, the same way that you commanded Lazarus, that you will unbind us and let us go. Let us be free in you, Lord. Let us find freedom in you. Unbind them now, in the name of Jesus. That you will release their hands and feet, Lord God, and their very faces. When they show up, there's glory on them, Lord God. Lord God, let people know who they are, your sons and daughters, Lord God. Give them heaven's value, Lord God. Let people see them as you see. What can I say? With the dry bones are coming back. Thank you, Jesus. Okay, I said, thank you, Lord God, that you poured out for your daughters this morning. You've called us back to you. You're the only one who can do this. This is all you, Holy Spirit. It is only you, Lord God. It is only you. I thank you that the spirit of the Lord is upon us now, that His hand is with us right now, that He will strengthen you. Will strengthen you, and He will guide you, and He will lead you, and He has never left you. I thank you, Jesus, for the promises. They are real and they are true. No matter what is happening around us, no matter what the situation looks like, He has never left you. The devil is a liar. You are not in prison. You are not your past. You are not what people say. You're what He says. Hey, you've got to know who you are, Jesus. You gotta know how He sees you. Daughters, sweet sons. Oh, I thank you for your love, Lord Jesus. It is only because of your love that we can bust through these obstacles. It is only because of the power of the Holy Spirit that we can go a little bit higher in you. And Father, we want you so much. We want your love and your protection and your mercy. Lord God, release them now and unbind these hands and feet, Lord God, so that they can be creators in their own right. They can be masterpieces. Amen. Unbind their hands and feet, Lord God, as mothers, as daughters, as sons, as aunts, sisters, as managers, as leaders. Unbind their mouths, Lord God, so they can speak your word, speak your words. Give them the words, Lord God, so they can prophesy over their lives in the same way you did in Ezekiel, Lord God. The Lord, the spirit of the Lord, God, coming upon him and placing Jesus inside of you, Lord God. Lord, would you just pull us back, pull our spirits inside of your spirit so we can prophesy into our own lives in the way that you, you will it for us, not what TikTok Jesus says, not what any other pastor says. Let it be so that we can speak into our lives based on what the Holy Spirit is telling us, Lord God. Lord God, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Lord, we try not to be a vessel. I say. Lord, we kind of be, be a vessel, Isaiah fifty-eight, Leviticus says, if you pour yourself out for the hungry. And satisfy the desire of the afflicted, then shall your light rise in the darkness and your gloom shall be as a noonday. If you want your light to rise in dark places, you gotta pour yourself out for other people. You can't just be a, you, you gotta see about people who are standing in need. People are hungry for the word and they are satisfied by Jesus, amen. The Lord will guide you continually and satisfy your desire in scorched places. Come on, come on, Lord, I just already did, and make your bones strong, amen. If you should be like a watered garden, like a spring of water, whose waters do not fail, Father, thank you. Back to Ezekiel.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, Lord God, some of us have been in scorched places for so long, we thought this was, this was real. Some of us have been in scorched and dried up places for so long, we thought this was our reality, it is a lie. Father, make our bones strong in the same way that you pull the bones together in Ezekiel thirty-seven. I receive that, I thank you, Lord, for making our bones strong, Father, let us be like watered gardens, overflowing. Spring of water, whose waters do not fail, Holy Spirit, let that be you, the overflow of your water, Father. Will you pour your water now on us? Father, let us be like watered gardens, Lord God, full and, and lush and beautiful. Oh God, the aroma of heaven, let that, let that be what it's like, oh God. Let our environments be like watered gardens, oh God. Let, let every place that we enter, every territory that we take over, Lord God, be like a watered garden. As we pour out ourselves for those who are hungry, for those. Prophesies, to satisfy the desire of the afflicted, it means we gotta go where people are. Helped up in church and think that's it, Lord God, so use us as vessels. Fill us up with your water, Lord God, fill us up with the spring water of heaven, so we can pour out for others, oh God. Use us, oh God, and let us be vessels for your kingdom, Lord God, broken and trapped as we are. I pray, Lord God, that you will do that for your daughters, we want to serve you, Lord, we want to serve your kingdom. So, Lord, I ask that you will just pour back into us, oh God, I thank you for shaking the chains off of us. I thank you for shaking the chains off our hands and our feet now, Lord God, so we can move, so we can move. Of heaven, amen, so Father, just as we are free, just as our dry bones have been renewed with spring water from heaven. Now make us a vessel, Lord God, pray and ask him for what you want, Lord God, go ahead. Ask him for whatever it is that you stand in need of as a vessel. Father, as we are vessels coming before you now, Lord God, only you know what we stand in need of, Lord God. Father, I ask that you hear these prayers as we enter into your throne room, I intercede on behalf of my brothers and sisters. Father, forgive us for our sins, dear God, Father, forgive us for where we've come short, we come to you humbly, heavenly Father. We thank you for your mercy and your grace and we just want to do better, do better, Lord God. Father, we present ourselves to you, Lord, as vessels, Father, receive unto us now. Some of us need, need new linen, Lord God, some of us need new clothing, Lord God, some of us need new names, Lord God. Some of us need new direction, Lord God, some of us just need new oil, some of us just need to be refreshed this morning. Lord, some of us need new opportunities, Lord God, new doors to be opened, to gate immediately and suddenly, Lord God. In the same way that you call Lazarus out, when you call us out now, Lord God, now that these chains are broken off of our hands. Lord God, so we don't go back to the old ways of thinking, so we don't do things the way we think they ought to be, but we're doing things. Based on what you say, Holy Spirit. We thank you for that, Lord, but Lord, everybody doesn't have access, so, Lord God, will you just allow, allow that to be true for us? You bring it back to the forefront, what you said that we should do. So, as we go out into this world, as we go out into this job, as we go out into our lives, oh God. That you'll bring it back to memory, these chains that have been broken, Lord God, the chain that have been broken, thank you, Jesus. The sword that you have used, that sword, Lord God, that same sword that you have used, thank you, Holy Spirit, for the word. That same sword that you've used have, it can, it is broken, it's, it's gone, it's gone, the chain is gone. Father God, let us be vessels that aren't going back to the old ways, it is gone, he said it's over, it's over, stop looking back, it's over. It's over, it's over, it's over, in the same way those dry bones became anew. Your dry bones have become and you don't go back to that old life, don't go back to that old thinking. He's doing a new thing in our lives, can't you see where he's taking you? Amen, I thank you, that we are vessels, oh God, so, I can, I said, receive unto us right now. Just receive what he's pouring into you, just receive what he's pouring into you, just receive what he's pouring into you. Fresh, fresh water, thank you, Lord God, thank you, Lord God, look. Thank you, Lord, thank you for the renewing, oh God, I can, I, I can, I thank you, Jesus.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Jesus. Lord, we're gonna go right into declaration, we're gonna go on. I see you, I see you, amen, I declare this day that no weapon formed against.
I say, the Lord, you are my refuge and my fortress, my God, and I will bless.
Yes, Lord, yes, Lord, Lord, we second, Lord, we believe, we believe in what you say about us. We thank you that your favor is surrounding us as a shield, we thank you for your divine protection. Uh, can I, the word says, I am the righteousness of God, you've got to understand who you are. You gotta enter into some of these places, now these shackles have fallen off, don't pick them back up. Now that these shackles have come off your hands and you're meant to produce fruit, don't pick them back up. Now that these shackles have fallen off your feet, that the Lord has used his mighty sword, I saw the angel doing that, is gone. Don't put it back on, don't put them back on, don't not go back, don't go backward, don't put it back on. The word says you can't be defeated or destroyed, the word says every tongue that accuses you, every tongue that attacks you. Do you know you can condemn them with your words, those words are backed up by the Holy Spirit, the word of God, that, that's how you do it. Can I say, there's a word, there's a word in here, Deuteronomy, I'm looking in my Bible, Deuteronomy twenty-eight, I thank you, Lord. The word says, Deuteronomy twenty-eight, uh, in verse eight, it says, the Lord will command the blessing on you. In your barns and in all that you undertake. And he will bless you in the land that the Lord, your God, is giving you. You gotta, eh, eh, but you gotta receive it, you gotta, you actually have to receive it, these are called blessings. Blessings for obedience, your obedience, right? So you've got to receive, you've got to receive what he has for you, you can't just pray, you can't just say words, you've got to receive these, these blessings. Onto yourselves, so when the word says that by the blood of Jesus Christ, you dwell in the secret place of the most high. You abide in the shadow of the Almighty, there is nothing the enemy can do to you, but you've got to receive that. And you got to put that in your heart and you got to put that in your mind. And the reason you need to do it is that, that is how you produce good fruit. Because if you don't have the word built into you, you're not always gonna have your Bible or your Bible app. You need to have that word become a part of your life. Word became flesh, can I say, it must become a part of your flesh, otherwise you're not gonna see what you're asking for. Amen, 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 amen. So now we're just gonna declare again, this is where we take our time and just declare, speaking over your life. Speaking what the Holy Spirit is putting on your heart now concerning you. Mark eleven twenty-four says, therefore I tell you, whatever you ask in prayer, believe that you received it and it will. So we're gonna go ahead and declare, Father, I just declare that this day is a day of victory. That this day is a day of testimony, that this day is a day of open doors for us. Your favor, we gonna sit back and go, I don't know how, I don't know what happened, that was Jesus. See you operate, oh God, in natural lives, but we know this is happening spiritually, oh God. And sometimes it takes time to happen in a natural, but I declare that this is the day we're gonna see attitudes. This is the day that we're gonna see people who have heard us. This is the day that the world see us differently, Lord God, this is the day that your army goes forward. The day that these vessels are ready for war, oh God, this is the day, Lord God, that you made and we are gonna rejoice and be glad in. This is the day that these vessels are now filled with oil, oh God, so they can go forth and press a little bit deeper, they can press hard. Push through it, this is the day, Lord God, of victory, the spirit of the Lord is gonna already prepare the path of victory for you. This is the day that we're gonna see increase in territory, this is the day that we're gonna influence our families to pray together. This is the day of breakthrough, this is a day of blessings, I declare that over all of us, that this is a different day. This is a different Monday, this is the day that we're gonna see mighty God, where we're gonna stand. This is a different week. Day that things are gonna shift in our favor, thank you, Jesus, that this is the day that job, job offers come through. That killer said, the bills are paid, this is the day that money shows up unexpectedly, amen, that you will possess in the natural. This is the day where clarity comes in, this is the day you will meet him in meditation. For those of you who haven't been reading the word, for those of you who've been given up on your scripture. This is the day that, that the Lord is gonna speak to you different, amen, that you're gonna encounter Jesus. That this is the day that he's gonna show up as a child, this is the day he's gonna show up as a stranger at the Walmart. That this is the day he's gonna show up as someone on your job, that this is the day you won't even know angels. But you won't even know angels showing up to protect you, but they are there, this is the day that the ministry of angels overtakes your house. This is the day that your house is anointed, this is the day that your doors are sealed. Are protected, your children are protected, amen, this is the day we see Psalm ninety-one play out. This is the day we see Psalm thirty-five concerning anyone who comes against us. Enemies destroyed, this is the day that we intercede and pray for other people, it says, pour out for the hungry. Okay, those who need to be satisfied, this is the day as a vessel, you've been activated to do more than just stand aside and wait. This is day you fight with prayer and you, it can, this is the day you fight with prayer, you've been activated to do this. For your family and your friends, this is day you stop gossiping and pray for them, amen. This is day you fight with the word of God, this is the day that you fight with the word of God, this is the day that you fight with the word of God. But you gotta know what it says, you gotta be in it, it's gotta be in your heart, in your mind, don't you know that? This is the day I declare that over you, amen, that everything you ask in prayer, it is yours, it is yours. It is yours, it is yours, I receive that from heaven, it is yours, it is ours. Abba, I thank you for loving us, it is ours, it is ours, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, let's take a couple of minutes and just praise him. Oh my God, I tell you, if I could get out of this chair, I would be running around this place. Lord, give us a space so we can open prayer and be a person so we can scream and run. Cause this is too much for my bones, it's too much to sit still, there's too much to praise you for to do this in a chair, Lord God. There's too much to praise you for, there's too much good that you're doing, there's too much open doors, there's too much favor on us for us not to be praising him. Saved your family and your life, uh, can I say, he's already rescued you, do you know? If you had any idea of the spiritual wickedness that was coming after you and he saved you, you'd be screaming on the top of your lungs. Praise you, hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Praise God from whom all blessings flow, praise him all creatures here below. Praise him above his heavenly host, praise Father, praise Son, praise Holy Ghost. If you knew what the Lord had done for you last night, you'd be on your feet, you'd be running around your bedrooms and your kitchen. Praising him, glorifying his name and thanking him, if you knew how he saved you last week. You, you would be screaming on the top of your lungs, praise you, praise you, Jesus. If you knew what was coming today, you'd praise him now before, before it shows up in the natural. That's how you take the enemy down, you confuse him through praise, that's how you break the laws of Jericho. Praise, don't you know if you praise him, when things are going wrong, praising when things are going right. Praise him when you're hurting, praise him when you're happy, if you praise, the enemy is confused, amen, what does that do? It means that he is now, he got time for you, but you don't know where to look, and your blessings come through, amen, so I praise you, Jesus. I praise you, I praise you, because I want my blessings. Because he done just like for me, I praise you, Jesus, because you appealed me. I praise you, Jesus, because you restored us back to you, I praise you, Jesus, I praise you, I praise you, oh God, I praise your holy name. I praise you because I've seen it, I praise you because the veil was ripped, I praise you, I. Oh, I praise you, I praise you, I praise you, when you go in your prayer closet, spend some time just praising him. Just praising him, just praising him because he is worthy, he is worthy to the third heavens. Ah, amen, he's worthy to the first heaven, I praise, I want to praise you more than angels do, Lord God. You done too much for us, oh God, to sit on our lips, oh God, so we speak in the sound. Even as the grass praises you, even as the trees praise you, I praise you, Abba, I praise you, oh. Oh, God, I. Worthy, you are worthy, you are worthy, you are so worthy, I can't stop praising, my soul cries out. You are so good to us, we don't even know the battles you fought for us, and that's because you love us, you protected us from so much. But we'll be on to you if you turn your back on him. Judgment is on you, I'm telling you now, you can't go on any other way but through the. I'm talking to somebody on the replay, you can't, you can't, you can't tarot card your way through this, you can't pay a profit through this. You ain't gonna go to the right church through this, you ain't gonna find a way around this, you gotta go the way of Jesus Christ, there is no other way. There isn't a back way, there isn't a really pastor, there isn't a podcaster, there isn't a, a YouTuber, there ain't a TikTok Jesus. I'm telling you right now, the only way you're gonna get to this kind of love and favor is through Jesus Christ, you gotta submit to him. You ain't gotta submit to me, I'm just Shelly, I'm just telling you right now, that's the secret, it's the Holy Spirit. You've got to submit to the Lord, you gotta give your life to the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm telling you, no Bible app, no ego is. And I rebuke every spirit that's been coming after you, I see you on. And untimely death. You've got to get back to the Lord Jesus Christ, you ain't gonna do this the way you think you're gonna do it, I'm telling you right now. Save you but Jesus. We're gonna go into benediction, and then we're gonna take a few minutes to just cool, he said, cool them down, Shelly. Okay, so we're gonna do blessings, Ephesians, Ephesians twenty through twenty-one, now to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all the. Okay. So we're gonna do blessings, Ephesians, Ephesians twenty through twenty-one, now to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all the. It's gonna do a couple of minutes of cool down. There's some people on live who catch the replay that don't get to see. It's gonna cool down just for a couple of minutes. Just move right now. Amen. Can I say, oh my, that can I, for the person who's watching, that's who it is. Okay, for the person who's watching. Where can I say, when the word talks about meditation and talks about prayer, eh, 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 prayer isn't the only way. Be able to listen. You gotta be able to listen. And when the Holy Spirit's moving, you gotta listen, listen, listen. So our, our prayers, prayers, amen. Our prayers go up like incense, amen. But guess what? Heaven is the only location that hears our prayers. Eh, the enemy hears it too. Will be attacked, but the point is that the prayers opens doors that you would never access. And that's why we pray, because when we pray, then other things, spiritual things are released for us. Help is released for us. And that's how we carry one more time. Amen. When we talk about meditating and, and really sitting back and listening. Sometimes you just gotta let the Holy Spirit work his way through. And that's what we intend to do. That's what happens when we close the call for that person who's been asked. Amen. All right, I'm just being obedient, y'all. All right, I'm gonna stop the recording. Give me one second.